All right, welcome back. I'm going to ask, Joel, are you online? Joel, are you in Zoom room? All right, I see no Joel. Well, old Commissioner, I mean, I mean.
It's me, the old Commissioner?
I know that I was there with the old one.
I think, I think that's me.
EDC.
I'm the oldest.
Let's jump to our EDC presentation.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Good to be joining you on this side of the table.
Let's give you a brief breakdown of how this.
Yeah, so do we? Yeah, well, they tell me it's just like riding a bike, so I suspect we'll be okay.
I don't know if I have a concern.
Yeah, I look forward to discussing those. So just a word of thanks for the opportunity to come share some updates with you on behalf of the Economic Development Council. So before we get started, I just want to thank Commissioner Tar- Tarwell. Appreciate you coming onto our board. We're excited to have you, but I also wanted to recognize Commissioner Trask's years of service on the board at the EDC. And so we just have a small token of our appreciation for you. So thank you for that.
That's cool.
And just the board misses you, but we're happy to have Commissioner Tarwell in your place, so thank you.
We miss you, but.
Right, but the beat goes on.
She just called you something.
So I thought I just have some updates to run through. I do have a, it looks like a healthy amount of time. I don't anticipate taking all of that time. It'll maybe get you guys back on track a little bit this morning. But just a quick state of the EDC for you all. So we are, we are really hitting the ground running to start 2025. If you recall, our staff over there, we have Karen Leaf, who's our Business Development Manager and is really kind of the tip of the spear for us when it comes to our business retention and expansion program and being out and about in the community. And then we also have Tiana Dunbar, who is our Marketing and Communication Specialist. So she's really great at putting together our events and trying to get the word out about different offerings that we have to support small businesses and entrepreneurs in the community. And she does everything from our social media work to our monthly newsletter, The Economic Edge, and, and a bunch of other things that are really helpful in terms of sharing the mission of the EDC in the community. So they're hard at work. I suspect right now at the office, they might be tuning in, so, but they are, they are very much at work in the community, helping to grow our local economy. We have a few areas of, you know, of focus for the organization. So as you know, we provide a quarterly report to the county as part of our contractual obligation to you all. You probably received that either at the end of December or earlier this month. I won't go through that. You'll have an opportunity, if you haven't already, to go through that at your leisure. But I wanted to hit some highlights. So first off, with our business retention and expansion program, this is kind of the core of our, of our mission is to support businesses in the community. And so what we've been doing has been trying to get people just connected to resources countywide to help with their business planning and, and things like that. So to that end, we hosted a Small Business Administration workshop in the fall. We hosted that out at Public Works. A great opportunity to bring in federal funders like the Small Business Administration, like the USDA, Apex Accelerator, which is, which is a, basically helps people be eligible for state and federal contracts and things like that. So we also had different lenders there to talk about lending processes and things like that. So we piloted it for this part of the county, and I'm excited to say March 19th, we'll be hosting one in Belfair. And so we're excited to be able to take that up there and, and connect folks in that part of the county to those resources as well. We've also been targeting enrollment into some of our business startup courses. So we have a couple that are, you know, that happen periodically throughout the year. So we have our BEST program, which is more like focused on people who may have an idea for a business, but don't really know how to get started and just sort of all of those foundational elements to, to getting them up and running, to Scale Up, which is for maybe a little bit more advanced. You've maybe been in business for a little while and you're trying to get your business to the next level. Scale Up is a great program to help you do that. And then Quick Start is sort of in the middle of both of those. So maybe you have a business plan, maybe you have some ideas and you have some, you know, you have some things in the works. Quick Start is basically an accelerant for you to, to help get things moving forward. So we have enrolled a number of people in those courses here from the community. And then, you know, ultimately what we do is we track them and their progress through the courses and then, once they're done, because we know a lot of times, you know, the coursework is only one part of it. So what's that follow-up look like is something that we're really interested in doing. So we track people throughout. And so ultimately, on the BRE side, you know, we can't do that from the office. So we need to be out in the community and we need to be visiting business owners in the community to help them, you know, just sometimes they don't know what's available. Sometimes they don't know that we're a resource. And so we're, we're happy to be out there in the community doing that. A couple of other things, housing and workforce development is another key focus area for us. We worked with the City of Shelton and private developers. You may recall doing letter of support last fall for a CHIP grant, which is Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program from Commerce. Ultimately, the private side wasn't able to move forward. They were still working on some of their financing, but it was a great opportunity for us to dive into a program that our community hasn't taken advantage of in the past, to really learn how it would work. And so I'm confident that if another project were to emerge and that funding is available, that we'd be in a good position to help private and public partners access that funding. We've also been working with TrueFab and other manufacturers at the port to try to expand their opportunities to grow and bring workforce in. TrueFab is a great example. So TrueFab is a manufacturer. They have, they have some really solid defense contracts, as well as they do some contract work for Boeing. They employ about 40 or 45 people right out of the port. They could double that workforce, triple it, and, and would still have work that they're walking away from. So being able to work with PAC Mountain, I know PAC Mountain was in a couple of weeks ago to meet with you all, good partner in this, but we were able to have a roundtable with the business owner, PAC Mountain, higher ed, and, and just to talk about what kind of welding do they, do they do there? Is that being taught by Olympic College in their welding program? And it turns out that the, that the specific type of welding that they do wasn't really a part of Olympic College's core curriculum for their welding program. So having that interaction, being able to facilitate that discussion, Olympic College is now going back and working on their curriculum to make it more in line with what's happening in our community so that they can help create that job pipeline. So we're excited about those opportunities. We have a follow-up meeting later this week on that. We're also working with Olympic College on GIS programming courses to try to help create additional career pipelines for people. And then one of the things that I'm most proud of, and I think the county might be considering doing this as well, but we initiated an internship program with Shelton High School. And so we've had our first intern do their 20-hour rotation with us. She loved it, she survived. It was a great experience, I think, for her, but also for us as we, you know, as we kind of figured out what it means to have somebody in there with an extra pair of hands for a little bit. So super cool opportunity. So this is with Shelton's CTE program with their academies. And so we were, we fell into the Business Finance and Hospitality Academy and just kind of a cool opportunity to work with the school district on that. And so more to come on that, but I do encourage you all to continue to pursue that. This is a great way for, you know, to, to meet students and kind of see, you know, what they're interested in, show them that there are careers here close to home. So even, even if they do go away for a two or four-year college program, they know that they can come home and apply for jobs here that, that we are hiring and open for business. So cool opportunity there. We'll keep leaning into those kinds of programs as well. Diversity and Inclusion work, so we do have a statutory requirement as part of our commerce work and through RCW to do some diversity and inclusion work in our business community. I know a lot of times that's kind of a charged topic and, and I certainly appreciate and understand that. But what does diversity and inclusion look like for the Economic Development Council? Well, it's how do we present our materials in a way that's accessible to non-English speakers? So we know we have a very vibrant Hispanic entrepreneurial community in Mason County. And so how do we, how do we get our materials and information out to them? A lot of the courses that I referenced earlier, whether it's BEST or Quick Start, they're offered in, they're offered in Spanish, but you know, you might not know about that unless we're connecting with that part of our community. And so we're focused on that. We're also focused on expanding our engagement with minority and women-owned business enterprises in the community. So there's a special office at the state that provides certification and credentialing for businesses that are women and minority owned. And again, it's just about creating other revenue streams for those businesses. And so we're, we're trying to help support those businesses that want to apply for that certification and be a resource for them. A great example is Kelsey Rudnick from The Shopper up the, up the road here. Kelsey is a majority owner in The Shopper, and so she was eligible to go through this process. It took several months, and so we learned a lot through watching her and hearing her experiences. And so we feel like there's an opportunity for us to also provide resources to other business owners and, and maybe create some mentorships with people who have gone through that process and who can, you know, who can help others go through it and navigate that as well. You know, the other thing, obviously, we've been hearing a lot in the past week about the executive orders at the federal level. We do have a lot of large employers here who have immigrant workforce. And so, you know, we've been getting calls asking, hey, what's, you know, what's going on, what's the guidance? We don't have a lot of that yet. And so, but when, when we learn more, we want to make sure that our employers are in a position to fill the jobs that they have, they're able to retain their workforce so that people understand what the, what the roles and obligations are going forward. So things that we're going to continue to monitor, all of this kind of falls under the diversity and inclusion umbrella in the economic development world. One thing that you're all probably interested in, that you play a large role in, is the local SEDS list. So that's the Community Economic Development Strategy List. That's the sort of the master project list for the community. Over the past six months, we've assisted partners in securing about $300,000 for their SEDS projects. This was predominantly through the State Department of Commerce for site readiness with the Port of Shelton at their Johns Prairie industrial site to do sewer feasibility work. And then we just secured in late in the fall, $100,000 from the Federal Economic Development Administration to support PUD III in the Port of Shelton on a substation project at Sanderson Field. So we, we have been trying to figure out how to crack the EDA code to figure out how to apply for those dollars. It's a more of a cumbersome process that we've seen from other federal agencies and certainly more challenging to apply for than state funding sources. So we're excited to kind of have our foot in the door with that project. We did it through a disaster recovery funding project that they had due to a presidential disaster declaration that we were under from a couple of years ago. And so, you know, we're trying to be opportunistic. So when we see projects that are on the SEDS list that align with funding opportunities, you know, we'll be contacting the appropriate agencies to see if there's an interest in applying for those funds. We do right now have a little bit of support to write grants through some other funding that we have from the state. And so we have some extra capacity for the next six months. And so when those opportunities come up and it's sometimes a burden for these organizations to take that work on, we're able to kind of, you know, pitch in and manage a lot of that work for them. So keep your eyes and ears open for some opportunities there. We've also, at the request of our Legislative Committee, started to work on a new, new approach to looking at the SEDS list projects and just trying to align them with more of a place-based strategy. So how do we build out, you know, the, the different parts of the county so that they're more competitive when it comes time to do site selection and, you know, build that infrastructure out so that we have more of a, you know, more of a site readiness mindset? So we're excited about that. It also helps kind of inform the legislative priorities that we put forward. So you all have your individual ones here, PUD III, the city, so on and so forth. How do those align with what, you know, the EDC is trying to accomplish and what our, our mission and strategic goals are? So we'll be back to you probably in February or March with some more information on the SEDS process for this year. We have a unique opportunity with the Federal Economic Development District that was instituted back in '23. That has now finally gone through the startup process. We have a director in, in place there now. Her name is Annette Roth. She just started January 16th. Super excited about working with Annette on those Economic Development District opportunities and projects, but so I don't want to go through two different SEDS processes. I would, so I'm kind of holding off until maybe a little, you know, February, March, like I said, so that I kind of have an idea of what she might be looking to do to update the SEDS list that was adopted as part of that. So maybe we can, you know, align that a little bit better than we have in the past. So, but we'll be back. There will be kind of an updated submission form and process for you all that just kind of captures a little bit more pertinent information as, as, you know, we go forward. So some, you know, just so keep your eyes and ears open for that. I'll, I'll be in touch with Mark on, on getting that all out so that you have enough time. As I mentioned, so just kind of a quick look ahead, we're focused on our small business outreach. So we'll be out and about more in the community and may engage with each of you and others to, to help assist with that. Of course, as you're talking to business owners in the community and they have issues, feel free to point them our way. We are a resource. We might not be able to solve their exact problem, but a good chance is we'll know who can or get them on the right path. So we're happy to do that. As I mentioned, we're also revamping that SEDS project submission form. We are close to completing our cluster analysis. So thank you all for supporting that project through the American Rescue Plan. We have one more focus group to host that we're doing in early February with our Forest Products industry. And so we've, you know, we've been sort of chipping away at this over the past few months, and I anticipate probably in March or April, we'll have the whole thing completed and be back to you with a briefing on the outcome of that, just to tie that loose end up for you all as well. We're also engaged on the comp plan update. So Karen has been attending comp or planning commission meetings on Mondays and weighing in when appropriate. The economic development element is being discussed tonight, so we will be engaged on that. I've sent some edits and some suggestions to Kel ahead of that and Marissa. As I mentioned, we are standing up and continuing to, to move forward with the Economic Development District. And so the final thing that I, I want to just kind of lay out there is, one of the things that we've been hearing a lot from our other member agencies is having some discussion with the county about '09 funds and how to access those in the future and trying to have a little bit more of a coordinated effort on that. So we'll be, we'll be having that conversation with Mark and then eventually you all, just to kind of see what that process could and should look like going forward. So that is the long and short of it. Happy to take any questions that you all might have.
You used a term earlier that I'm not familiar with.
Sure.
Was leisure. You said at your leisure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What does that word? I'm not familiar with that these days.
Yeah, I'm sure you're not, so.
Sorry.
At your convenience, maybe. Yeah.
'09 funds, who are you looking to get access to it? What are you thinking?
Well, I think just more, and we kind of talked about this a little bit last year when we were, were making some of those funding decisions, was just, there's not a clear process to solicit projects if there are ones that would be eligible, you know, based on the RCW or SEDS list. And so I think it's more of a conversation about how do you, how do you let people know that there is, you know, funding available? What would that funding limit look like? You know, what's the, what's the timeline for, you know, the county maybe putting that out and making a decision and things like that? So.
Well, interesting, it's going back, way back in the past, there was a time when we did actually go out. Now, what we've taken to doing is when somebody does a request, then we kind of let them know what's happening, but maybe we should look at that. It happened once before.
And I'll just, I'll just kind of add to that. I think the value to other organizations is more, you know, I mean, there might be some projects that would, you know, could be completed with just a, with just a SEDS list allocation, but I think the value that, that I've been hearing in those conversations has been, it's a, it's a potentially valuable pot for match, matching funds for, you know, other grants and things that they're going for and things like that. So, you know, and certainly if they have to close a gap on what they have funding, you know.
Well, right now, they don't even know they can.
Right.
So, no, I, I get you. I just was checking. I know you met with Ag here recently as one of your things. I'm about ready to bring forward something to the commission, you know, through Mark and all, that Ag committee that they had asked for. With that, I was wondering, is that something that you could see the, the EDC being a member on?
For sure. I actually, I'm glad that you mentioned that. That was one of the comments that I provided to Kel and Marissa for the economic development element of the comp plan. Yeah, I mean, Larry Bolt brought it up at the, at our focus group. It's, you know, with Washington Farm Bureau. I think great opportunity. So Blue Zones, Julie Nott with Blue Zones, Mason Matters, and some of the other organizations have been working really hard on trying to improve access to healthy foods in the community. I see some really natural partnerships that might make sense there, whether it's WSU Extension. But one of the projects that they did with Blue Zones was connecting Mason General with local producers so that they have access to things grown in Mason County to use in their, in their food services at the hospital. You could easily see that expand to schools and other, other institutions in the community to get people eating healthier, get people eating more locally. And I think there would be a lot of energy around those types of things. So yeah, count us in for, for that if and when that discussion happens. Like I said, I, I made that one of the comments that I submitted before tonight's PAC meeting. I think it would be a great opportunity.
Yeah, one of the things I foresee is being able to bring together different agriculture is more than what you think of, you guys already know this, but I'm just saying for the public, agriculture isn't just wheat, corn. It's also cattle, it's also the woods. It's also, you know, brush for brushheads. It is aquaculture. And with that, maybe each one of them has a voting spot on it. I was thinking maybe the EDC having a voting spot on. Other ones that you could send me for ideas that you have would be appreciated. Other ones that would not be voting members, but you know, on there like WSC was a great one that you just mentioned, and I hadn't had that on my list, so I shouldn't have. So with that, just two more different questions. The CHIP's funding, you made a comment about whether or not the funding is available. Is there funding available right now if somebody was putting it?
Not right now, yeah. So we have to wait for that grant cycle to reopen, you know. So we'll see what happens in the legislature. They're hard at work doing whatever it is they do. And so we'll see, hopefully there will be another round of that either this summer or in the fall. And so, yeah, we're in a good position to take advantage of it. So the, the key there is it's for affordable housing projects, so it's not just any kind of development there's, you know. But the, the design of the CHIP program is such that it's intended to be as flexible for the developers as they can possibly be, right? So you do have to make a commitment of at least 25% of your units being, you know, dubbed affordable. There is some reporting, but in terms of how you've seen some of the other types of funding for affordable housing go, this one is pretty, pretty low barrier. It's pretty easy to manage. It was unfortunate, it was, it was the Dragonville project. It would have been a great project. They just, I think, having to shift the business model that they had to incorporate the affordable component with the time that we had, it just, it wasn't, you know, it just couldn't work. But the way that the city stepped up, the way that, you know, the, the private investors stood up to do the work was really impressive, and I think it sets the tone for how we can do things going forward.
And a reminder for those that are listening, not all low-income property projects are meant to bring people in. It's sometimes meant to be able to take care of the people we have. Being North Mason, I lose a lot of my neighbors because they can't afford to live here anymore, and that's a shame to me. I hate seeing that happen, especially as they get older.
Yeah.
So this can be very beneficial to us on many different levels. One more, you talked about your BEST program. 20 years ago when I was a Port Commissioner, we had a cash program, and it was extremely successful. It was the idea that they would pay a little bit to get in, but we did give grants out. The Port set this up. And they paid 500, I think is what it was. And then we got some, some grants. They took businesses, people wanted to start businesses, brought them all in rooms, started with projects small to walk them all through the process. I think there was 24 that we started with. Seven businesses came out of that class. Seven. One of them I know lasted like seven, eight years because it was still going the last time I had to talk to him. One of my favorites was some guy had an idea of virtual offices. It was the first I'd ever heard of it back then, but he had a lot of clients. He opened a virtual office, they wanted an address, he had the address. He had, and they had a website, this is, you know, part of this building. It was pretty impressive. I know that that lasted for several years, and I know that he ended up hiring like three, four people. The other one hired like 11. So maybe it's something that we consider, or you come to us with being able to provide them with maybe $2,000 after they go through the educational process, allows them to actually open the business. It's just something for us to consider and to think about. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, and I look forward to seeing how that is. And you can count on me because I already know it's effective. So if you pull up something, just give me a yell, I'd be supportive in a heartbeat.
Yeah. And I guess too, just to add on to that, I should have said this earlier, but we have scholarships available right now for all three of those programs. And so as long as you're willing to commit to, you know, going through the coursework and, and most of them, I think, I think all three of them have pretty much their online learning at this point, but maybe some in-person stuff. But as long as you're willing to commit to the, to the work, you know, there's, it'll be paid for. So.
I'll tell you, I learned firsthand that the ones that, that we granted didn't do as well as the ones that actually put skin in the game. $500 was not a lot, but they put the skin in the game and they showed up for every meeting, where a few of them that we gave it to did not. Not all of them, but. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Perfect.
All right.
All right, well, see you in a couple of months.
Thanks for having coffee with me.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it was great to catch up.
Kind of fun to be able to talk.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And I'll just say, I mean, if, if you ever need anything, don't hesitate to give us a call. Like I said, we're a resource to you all as well, and appreciate the county's continued support of the EDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Love your staff.
Thanks, me too. I've been really fortunate to have a lot of great people to work with.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, let's move on to our treasures.
Morning.
Good morning, Ms. Trisha.
How are you today?
I'm good. How are you guys? Happy Monday. Cold and clear outside, my favorite weather. Sunny and warm, that's even my favorite.
Seasons are wonderful.
I just have two pieces of annual business to come before you today. One is the resolution to cancel uncollected personal property taxes. This is something that we do annually for the want of not being able to collect these taxes on small businesses who are no longer doing business in Mason County. Whether or not they've left, if it's a bankruptcy, it's an estimate of value on the Assessor, that sort of thing. So you'll find a list of those parcels that we will look for you to approve cancellation of the taxes on. It totals $2,106.62. The budget impact obviously is that amount across current expense or special funds in the junior taxing districts for which we collect the monies for. So again, this is annual, it would come before you at a meeting for approval. We've done our due diligence to try and collect these to the best of our ability, but finding nothing to sell or to stream or for clothes on leaves us with them coming before you. So.
And you all had this on the February 3rd?
February 4th, your next original, yeah.
On the 4th?
Yes. Mackenzie's over there shaking her head at me. Pretty sure it's on my calendar for the 4th, too.
I appreciate your head nods.
The second item again is annual. It's the acknowledgement of the receipt for the 2024 property tax refunds. Again, statute says that I will make all refunds as determined under this section, and by the first Monday in February we choose, we'll provide you with report of such. This is that report. Doesn't need approval, just need to acknowledge that you received it. There were 287 refunds in 2024. The total amount of refunds was $528,000. 460 of that went back to the taxpayers, and 67 of that went back to the county in some way, shape, or form. It was transferred to another parcel or reapplied to taxes that they still owed, that sort of thing. There is a list showing the breakdown of all of the refunds that we did for the year.
Kind of neat to see all the senior exemptions, so we know that that word's getting out.
A lot of senior exemptions, and last year was, there was a change in the amount that seniors could make, so it brought in a lot more of those accounts to the tax rolls. So going back.
On the senior exemptions, are they, uh, is it fifty-five thousand still?
It's, I believe it's fifty-five thousand or less.
No, is that per household or per individual or how are they doing that?
I would direct you to the assessor for all the documentation on that, but it is generally per household.
Okay, thank you.
You have any questions? I'm happy to answer them, but these again are just pretty much standard annual business for you. And I appreciate your time this morning.
Any questions?
Thank you for all your hard work.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
We do appreciate. Alright, now we have the sheriff's office.
This is the most I've seen in one place in, in years. And I'm thankful for that. It used to be a, it used to be a tough thing.
Incredible, of course.
I'd be happy to, but.
No, thank you.
How are you?
Seems to be getting better, but.
He's pretty snotty. Alright.
Uh, I just noticed that Joel is online.
Okay.
Yep, go right ahead.
Do you guys mind if we jump in and? Hi Joel.
Good morning.
How are you this morning?
How does it go?
Oh, good. Good. Hey, thank you for applying for the, uh, to be a member of the PAC. We appreciate that. We are going to go through, we've got seven questions that we're gonna ask you. We'll take turns asking the questions, which is kind of do the round, like we normally do. Commissioner Netherman, will you go first? Commissioner Tarver, I'll follow. And then, um, there, I like what Commissioner Netherman says, there is no right or wrong answer. So just answer however you feel appropriate.
So what do you see as the function of the planning commission?
I mean, the function for what I have was more the, the handling of the land and stuff to utilize within the county. Um, honestly, I, 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 I'm not too up to date on a lot of things. Um, you know, I'm the type of person that goes kind of more of a, you know, instead of wanting everybody else to make the change for you, um, willing to step up and learn as much as I possibly can. So I can understand a little bit more and I can help, um, you know, actually physically trying to make a difference. Um, not just say, hey, I wish they would do this, I wish, I wish they, 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 you know, I want me. What can I do to step forward and to help better the communities that we live in?
So you've somewhat touched on this, but question two is, why do you want to sit on this advisory board?
Again, I, I mean, I've done a lot of stuff within the North Mason School District, uh, to try to better the school district. Um, but that only helps a little bit. So if I can get into getting more on more into the board of this and stuff like that to actually learn and find out what's got there, um, that will allow me, you know, me physically just making that change and trying to do my best to help better, better the community that we do live in, so.
Alright, great. So please describe your familiarity and understanding of the Comprehensive Plan, Growth Management Act, and Development Regulation.
Right now, honestly, I, I don't have much in there. Um, that's something I'm willing to learn. I'm something to, I'll start getting, I'm starting to try to get into. Uh, there, unfortunately, you know, I do work for FedEx. It was a little bit of a busy Christmas. We're just finishing that up. So my goal is to, you know, engage myself into, whether, whether I get the position or not, I want to familiarize myself with the things that go on the county and how I can help even outside to, to make it better.
So what is your opinion of rural development?
Um, I mean, I, there's always the need for things. So I mean, obviously we gotta make sure that, you know, it's not something that will uh, affect our habitats and stuff like that. Um, you know, make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that, that it is being done correctly, um, and not just to shim it through. But, um, I mean, sometimes you, you, some of the rural areas, we are a rural area. There's a lot of stuff that's in there. I mean, we gotta preserve, uh, you know, the forests and stuff like that as much as we can. Um, but I don't see, there could be middle places. It's just a matter of what, what can be done.
Uh, the board meets once a month, at least, currently using Zoom, but like we'll have a meeting tonight, it'll be here in the chambers. So you'll also be able to attend by Zoom. Will you, uh, will this be an issue for you? I mean, can you?
No, like I said, I, I can usually plan my, my days and my weeks, uh, with my job. So it's a little, it's, I can adjust with the other peer manager if something conflicts, but shouldn't be a problem.
Alright, do you have any conflicts of interest of the county code violation?
You want that?
Do you have any, uh, do you have any co- county code violations that you know of?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Joel, do you have any questions for us now that would help you to make any decisions, uh, for yourself?
No, like I said, I, I, like I told, you know, initially told you, Randy and stuff like that, you know, I want to do what's, what I can do to help the community. Um, you know, what can I do? What parts can I be part of? And you know, this was one that you suggested, it was the other one. Um, there was a multiple there. So like I said, I just want to get more involved. I mean, I, I can't just sit here and ask, expect things to get done if I'm not willing to get my hands dirty to get them done as well, so.
Alright, great. Thank you so much. So, um, typically the process for this is we will discuss, we've, we have two other applicants. So we will discuss this and then, um, our staff will get back with you and.
No problem. I, I, I thank you for your time.
Alright, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you too. Mackenzie, thank you first. Alright.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Uh, just wanted to update you guys on where we're at. I think I talked with each of you individually about the jail. We're, thanks to the contract partially and other things, we have now, uh, got enough staffing to bump our minimum staffing back up to four. If you remember a little bit of the history, we had a tremendous amount of burnout and overtime because the staffing levels had dropped. And then we were keeping the minimum staffing of four, which was causing some people to work so many hours, it was starting to become dangerous. We'd come to you guys and asked about outsourcing as an emergency option. And it was supposed to go for a few months, but our staffing didn't really recover. And correct me or jump in if I'm off on any of these. Uh, didn't recover, so we came back to you and said, well, we, we could stop doing the Nisqually outsourcing, but that would affect our jail, uh, restrictions and our cap. Because we had a while where we weren't restricting, we were making arrests and making a difference in the communities. And I, you guys at that point said, okay, let's extend the outsourcing. Well, we're back to you. We have enough staffing now that we've bumped our, uh, minimum staffing back up to four. And it's the first time in a year and
It's been a while, yes.
A year and a half that we've had a minimum staffing of four now, which means we can bump the population back up. And we brought back many of the people that we've been outsourcing to Nisqually. Uh, we're, as of today, we have fifty-four in the jail and seven at Nisqually, Nisqually. And, uh, if we brought all seven of those back, that would only give us two additional beds. We can bring them back, but it's going to more than likely result in periodic booking restrictions based on the flow. I mean, we're, we've got a major incident right now in the community that we're gonna be arresting somebody. So that bed will be full probably if we make the arrest today. So we'd be right at the, the cap and have to put restrictions on. So it's kind of a, give you the opportunity to kind of direct us because it comes back to the fiscal, uh, obligation of the outsourcing, how you would like us to move forward with that. Anything to add? You guys are?
Uh, just, just a reminder that, um, with the, we don't have full staff yet. We still have seven vacant positions. And that's counting the two that we converted through the budget process from CSOs to corrections deputies. So we still have seven vacant positions in our field. Um, we have one out on admin leave right now. We have one on FMLA. And it goes on and on. So we have to, you know.
Actually have seventeen people are right, right now that are available to work, or nineteen people that are available to work the jail. And that's to cover four people per shift, um, seven days a week. So this doesn't, uh, what, what the sheriff's talking about, bringing us back to around sixty-three inmates over there, doesn't put us at full capacity. So we still need to hire, hire and train the rest of those people to fully staff the jail to get back to maximum capacity over there and fill the beds. So we're kind of in this interim area. We're not where we, where we were a year ago when I only had fourteen people to run the jail when we asked you guys to outsource. We've got five more bodies now. And now what we're saying is we can, we can probably bring those guys back, but there might be some booking restrictions associated with it because we still don't have the adequate staffing to completely staff the jail at, at maximum capacity.
But we've significantly reduced how many we're sending to.
For sure.
Uh, Nisqually to reduce that bill.
So are you getting applications to fill those seven?
Uh, yes. Um, there's been a lot of people who have not passed backgrounds. Uh, that's been
That's an ongoing issue.
Big hurdle for us. Um, we have interviews scheduled for later this week. I believe it, I believe it's later this week. Uh, but there's, we still don't have a whole big list. We initially, after the whole, um, the word got out that we increased our pay, we had quite a influx of people applying. And then we kind of weeded through that list now with civil service. And we've gotten through most of it. And we've hired a couple from that list, so, but we've lost a couple too, so.
So hopefully, you know, we're actively trying to go after those laterals. We're specifically making actions to make that happen. Because that's one of the reasons why we did what we did, with the hopes of getting them. And there are still some, uh, some things that we've never covered that we know that there are opportunities that we've talked about with being able to offer them more time. Uh, there's a process now. We'd like to eventually have a conversation as commissioned about making it straight policy, but you guys can still come.
You're talking about, uh, annual leave on the books or accrual rate, uh, those type of things to make it attractive.
It's still allowed if it goes through the process. What we're talking about in the past is trying to maybe set it up as an allowed part of your process. Uh, and I can't help but say what I have to say, it's the same thing I've been saying for years. So, uh, I'm not though counting this with the population for, uh, what you have to do the work. Uh, but my view of what's full and your view of what's full, I'm going historically, we've had as many as a hundred and sixty. I know we don't like it. But there are allowances for boats and stuff like that, but not with the capacity that you have to handle them. I'm just throwing it back out because I have to. I want to be consistent is what I've always said since the first day I ever met you. So with that being said, I wanted to throw that out there, but I'm comfortable with the way you're handling it right now personally. Uh, the idea, we still want to keep some of those beds over there anyway, in case we have something big happen or whatever. We, it, it's smart to keep some availability. And when you completely pull people out of it, you quite often lose the ability to use up some of them when needed. So I'm completely comfortable with where we are and I'll share that with you too.
Well, I know, I know that the numbers, you guys can't hold a hundred and sixty because of restrictions set by the legislature and the courts too, so.
Well, it's been redesigned since twenty sixteen, anyway.
Right, right.
Well, it, yeah, it all, it's about lawsuits and I mean, you can't have people sleeping, three people in a, you know, eight by eight room. One on the floor and two on boats. And, you know, we had a couple suicides that were, you know, we had to pay out on.
Nope. That's it. That's not correct. We brought that up again. It wasn't because of overcrowding. They use that as the, as part of the thing, the attack to come after us. But that isn't what was ever found. The old sheriff said that, that he was incorrect. That isn't what happened. I'm risk pool, I, we did not lose based on that. They always throw that out in everybody, just so you know.
So what, uh, if you had all of the staffing that you, that you need, what is the capacity?
So there's ninety-three physical beds in the jail. And so our capacity, operational capacity is eighty. And that allows us some flexibility to be able to keep the inmate, uh, image separate from other inmates who have to be kept separate. Maximum from minimum security, women away from men, um, you know, protected cussy people away from everybody. Uh, so it's, it's a, it's a, gives us a little bit of room to play the shuffle game to move inmates around and imagine the jail safely. So there's ninety-three beds there.
With really a maximum of eighty.
Correct.
Temporary.
Yeah, and I think the definition.
Ninety-three also includes that, uh, the beds that we have.
That doesn't include the upstairs.
Oh, it doesn't include those beds, okay.
No.
Ninety-three is just on the regular floor without the, um, alternative sentencing beds.
Correct.
Okay.
What about the, the ones, um, home, they're, they're restricted to state at home. Does that include that number as well or?
Uh, no, no, there's no restriction in amount of beds on those. Um, we're not staffing that right now.
I was gonna say, are we even staffing that?
No, because I had to, I had to move those people from that program down to the jail. Um, and so we, we closed it temporarily and I hope to have that back up and running by the summer.
So Pat, we got so low, we had one incident where one person was left in the, the place to deal with everybody. We never want to be like that again. So that's a reason, that is why we're doing some of the things we did.
And we appreciate that.
I consider that bottom, you know, that was absolute bottom.
That's not bottom, that's a negative.
Yeah, scary.
For sure.
Well, and there's a lot going on at the state right now with jail standards and, uh, some of their recommendations and
Yeah.
Mandates without funding type of stuff, so it'll be a concern.
Yeah, we need to watch that. So if I could get you guys to help too, let's, let's all work on that together. And testify when needed and comment as often as possible.
Questions or concerns?
No.
Think you're doing right.
Okay, we just want to make sure you were up to date because you've been, uh, very gracious in allowing us to outsource through the last year and a half. And that's, uh, it's been a financial commitment to do that.
I would like to ask if you see another opportunity for laterals. Cause I, to me, I'd rather bring laterals every, any day of the week. If you see something else we're missing, please let us know. We need as many of those laterals that are already trained, already have history, keeping everybody else safe. So it's like bringing a veteran football team.
I know that you and I had had a conversation about, uh, the vacation accrual and other things, you know, give me your, for your credit on the vacation stuff. But so were, did you expect us to, you need to put something together? I thought you said you were working on it?
We have been talking about it at different times. So there's something, uh, what I'm telling you is, it turns out there's a provision that allows for you guys already to try and negotiate a little bit of it. The difference is now you have to bring it to us.
Right.
Where, uh, cause we've done it in the past. Uh, I think we did it when we got you.
Yeah.
Uh, so that provision still exists, so it can still be used.
Okay.
The other one that we had talked about is whether or not to have it as part of the policy. So whenever you go out to do it, that you can utilize the policy to get that lateral within this, this framework.
Yeah, it'd be super nice to be able to use that as a selling point rather than, um, maybe possibly it could happen if we came and talked to the commission.
I, I agree.
Be very.
And hopefully we'll pick that up again here shortly. As you know, we had a lot of stuff going on. We still do.
Yeah.
We have different other negotiations that are happening right now, but.
And the hiring bonus also for corrections expired at the end of the year too. So that's not, that's not out there anymore.
Because we increased the wages, that was, yeah.
So.
There wasn't a lot of indication that it made that big of a difference for us.
Obviously didn't.
Yeah.
And all that, we didn't get anything, yeah.
Yeah.
It was just trying to swim. We were, we were in trouble.
And we just received a resignation from one of our corrections deputies.
Well, we'll get laterals and then tell us what you need to make that happen.
Sounds good.
Alright.
We have one more.
You ready for the next topic?
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect, alright.
Sheriff was very relieved with you doing.
Oh, hey, this is, this is my, this is my bailiwick, so.
He, he could.
So you remember back in two thousand twenty-three, we were looking at our operations and one of the, one of the significant, uh, structural weaknesses that we had in our office was, um, in our administrative division under Chief Byer, we had, um, no, uh, no supervision between the chief and the frontline office personnel. And so I think as you all know, Chief Byer manages a massive liability when it comes to, uh, public disclosure requests. Um, our office handles more public disclosure requests than the entire rest of the county combined. And they're usually pretty extensive and high liability. And she also manages our, um, caseload for lawsuits and works close with risk pool and HR. And so, um, the, the concern that we had back then was that her time was so divided with dealing with the day-to-day, um, workload in the office, um, um, working with frontline staff and, and delivering subpoenas and all the civil process that, um, it was a liability concern. So we decided in twenty twenty-four to do a proof of concept of what it would look like to have a supervisor in the office from the patrol division. Uh, it's super nice to have someone from the patrol division who has experience with the civil process and what it looks like out in the field and operations. And then have the authority to direct, uh, the civil service deputies to the work that they do and that workload as well as manage the office operations. And so we had two different, uh, um, folks who offered to work through and learn about the, the whole process in there and, and kind of do that proof of concept. And it worked very, very well. And we talked to you folks at the end of last year about, um, putting a supervisory position in there. At the time, we weren't sure if it was going to be a corporal's position, a sergeant's position, what structure would work best. And because we were so late in the, um, the budgeting process, we asked that you, um, put a deputy's position in there as a placeholder until we kind of knew what we were looking for. Um, you did give us another deputy's position, which we were very grateful for, which allowed us to, um, have a little bit of extra time. Um, in the final analysis, we've determined that a sergeant's position in there for that supervisory position would be best. And what we're asking at this point is just to convert that deputy's position that you, um, gave us in the budget to a sergeant's position so that we have the appropriate level supervision in the office at this time. So that's kind of where we're at. And, um, we're not asking for, it's, it's about twenty-five thousand a year from a step three deputy. from a step three deputy to a sergeant's position. Um, step three is where they have to be in order to promote to sergeant. So that's why we use that, uh, why we use that position. But, uh, it's probably going to be a corporal that promotes anyways. And so obviously that's a much smaller. Um, additionally, we wouldn't be asking for any budget supplemental for that for this year. We will certainly have that capacity and, um, unused salary benefits. So it's simply, uh, a matter of converting that position over and then moving from there.
So they're sure there would be no, nothing changing?
No, the only thing that we're asking for is no budget change, just the position.
This year.
This year, yes, for sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Kristen's thoughts, concerns? Don't speak all of us.
Having almost no knowledge of this, you know, this is all new to me. It makes sense, but.
Yeah, we talked about it. I think we, uh, I think you came to us individually.
Yep.
To talk about it, to kind of, and I, I think we met a couple of times because I had.
It was a little confusing at first.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we also talked about it in the budget workshop too, explaining kind of what we were doing. And I will admit, the first, uh, the first briefing in the budget workshops was a little bit disjointed because we were still trying to figure out how, how we wanted to structure that position. But, uh, I think we got it figured out.
I, uh, I'd imagine it works as, as the sheriff knows, uh, I believe we're going to be having cuts sooner rather than later. I think we're going to recognize what's coming before us. So any type of expansion like that always gets me. Uh, that's not as big of a expansion to, to change somebody than it is to actually bring somebody in completely. I do recognize that right away. I wondered to myself, is it something that temporarily could be done with a lead position as we figure out exactly where we're at in the next six months? But at least get you the ability to have a lead position while you're going through it now. I know you're not a fan, but at the same time, sometimes it's the only option. So I just, uh, like, as you know, I worry about it. We're going to be doing it in another four months.
Uh, yeah, I mean, as far as the lead position, that's, we've had two corporals in those positions over the last year now. Um, I'm not really sure what a lead position looks like. We don't really use that at the sheriff's office, so. Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what that is, to be quite honest. I, I understand what it is in our offices.
A junior managerial position with some abilities to do.
Yeah, and we.
Things outside their, their, their structure.
Yeah, we looked at the, uh, option of having a civilian office manager, the option of having, um, someone from the office staff move up into that position. And I think the real challenge was, is there's such an interplay between, um, the patrol division and the administrative division, especially when it comes to the civil service process and going out and serving all the civil orders. Plus it's really tied into a lot of high liability things like, um, protection orders and seizure of weapons and, um, evicting people from residences that having a, um, having a commissioned person in that position.
Just, you know, I don't disagree with you, not even a little bit.
Yeah, it's, was, we, we just determined that that was the best option. And the other, the other thing that has, um, that we know will be super beneficial is that, um, because of that person's level of intimate understanding of the entire system, they are much better able to be the second, the backup person for Chief Byer on public disclosure requests and have, you know, have some redundancy there that we did not have before. And so, um, I'm, I, I just think it's such a high liability to us that regardless of what's coming for the future, we really need to have that position to manage, to manage the liabilities of the office.
And if we were going to cut, it wouldn't be that position more than likely.
Yeah, but it just means the more we add today, the more we have to.
Yeah.
Cause I think we're, we're running onto that.
Well, and we're assuming that there's going to be cuts. That's, that's like a commission.
Nope, I'm just talking about for myself, what I see in the future. I'm not speaking for the commission. But when it comes to whether I want to add more money to the budgets, I'm allowed to have that opinion and I, I do.
You are allowed, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a group discussion. And so. Have you worked through, um, HR as far as the, the job description?
The, the job description is already what we identified it as before. It's, um, it's. What's that?
It's a, a title change.
It's not even a title change. It's simply a moving from a deputy to a sergeant. It's just a job assignment. And so we have, I don't know, dozens of job assignments in our office where we assign person to, uh, one place or another. So the actual job description, um, we already have job descriptions for working public disclosure and other things. And so.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that HR is super concerned. The union has not expressed any concern. It's more opportunity for people within the union. So I think we have vetted all that out.
Okay. Okay. Um, I guess the next step would be to put it on the agenda if that's the direction that we want to go.
I have no problem with putting it on the agenda.
Well, I've already expressed my, you know, I doubt that I would vote against it, but I still think you should look at doing it through a, a lead position or something else before creating a whole new sergeant position that will have a pathway that goes with it.
Yeah, you know how I feel about lead positions. And so I would rather go with this position change for that.
Yeah, and I, I would respectfully suggest that putting two corporals in there over the period of the last year is about as close as we're going to, at least in our concept of structure, it kind of have to a temporary lead position. I mean, that, that seemed to be our proof of concept. And so I'm not, I'm not sure how we would structure that otherwise, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Well, and I appreciate you guys working through it and, and seeing if it'll work and, and how it would work. So, um, appreciate you taking that.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly, it takes, yeah, I mean, we had to take corporals out of patrol, so it diminished the capacity and total leadership capacity in patrol in order to do that. But I mean, that position was such high liability that we really couldn't ignore, um, ignore the reasons for why we did it.
But then the sheriff will still be in the same position, taking somebody off the street in order to make the sergeant order if you do that. So that, that doesn't change.
No, actually it does because the position that we asked you for, the deputy's position, was for that position in the office. Um, that was the, that's what the deputy was for. But we asked for that deputy knowing that it was going to be a leadership position. We just weren't, wasn't sure if it was a corporal or sergeant. So that, it won't change the capacity in patrol now because you guys gave us that position in the last budget.
Right. I remember that, talking about that during our budget talks.
Yep.
All right.
Good. All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to?
Thank you.
Thanks, you too.
Which part?
Commissioner, do you need a quick break?
I could give water, but I don't have to. I still got a little bit left. That sucks.
You gonna try that onion thing?
No.
All right, Kel. That's Marissa.
I don't know what's on there.
What's my story? It's just a news.
Quarterly update.
That's funny.
On Smart Gov permits, middle and scanning projects. And it was all included in our packet. So I don't know whether you want to, how detailed you want to go through. Hopefully people looked at their packets.
Yeah, so quarterly update on Smart Gov, uh, appointment system, permit turnaround times and the scanning. So on Smart Gov, that's our permitting software. Uh, Commissioner Tarzwell, if you're not familiar, we have a software that we transitioned to in twenty nineteen and, uh, we've been upgrading it, uh, extensively in the last couple of years. And so now we've, we're, um, we're putting things online that we, otherwise we're just taking appointment or, uh, hand submittals. And now we're getting more and more permit types online and we've done some more. Um, and matter of fact, I think, um, our Smart Gov person was saying, although when you look at the statistics, um, online applications, we took a total of a thousand seventy-seven and paper applications, we took eighteen hundred and forty-four. But there was something where she said we took more online applications than the paper ones. And I, I can't tell from this, um, and I've forgotten what she told me.
But we do have a total, we're looking at a total of twenty-nine hundred?
Yes, but that's all permit types.
Yes.
Um, so that's going well. We did stop with some Smart Gov updates at the end of last year just to get, um, more organized on permitting. And so they've started back up again. Uh, there's a small team that meets regularly. They were meeting weekly last year and now they're going to go to monthly. So we're, so we're feeling pretty comfortable with Smart Gov and how it's operating. And we'll just continue those improvements and get additional, um, permit types online, including the single family, uh, residential units. Um, we do not have a backup in our appointment system at all. That was something that we saw earlier last year. But, um, people who want to submit permits can get sometimes same day or, um, definitely within the same week. So, uh, we have four fully operational permit texts and that's helped a lot. Um, our average permit turnaround times are staying at that just under the forty days. So once we, well, it looks like about December of twenty-three. So we've stayed steady all of twenty twenty-four, um, just you could, within a couple of days, um, and we're, we're still there. So, um, that's a huge improvement from what you saw in twenty twenty-two and earlier.
Yeah, I love seeing that. That's awesome.
And then on the scanning project, this is, uh, we received some ARPA funds for a, was it four-year project? To scan, digitize all of our permits that are required to be, um, saved. We have a lot of paper in our files that are considered transient. And so, um, we don't have to scan everything that are in the files. We can just recycle, go ahead and recycle them. Um, and we've got two full-time staff that are working on that and they do, they're an excellent team together. Um, and they've been, um, diligently going through. They are now housed downstairs in our building, uh, in an old conference room, um, and have a lot of the, um, uh, file cabinets. We were able to move down there as well and free up space upstairs, uh, which we were able to add a couple more, um, workspaces with that improved room. Um, but we are on track to complete the project or at least near completion by the end of twenty twenty-six. All of the ARPA funds will be used. Um, and then we're just working to make sure that the project gets complete one hundred percent, um, even as the money is run out. So, um, working with, uh, our accountant on making sure that those, that we have our own internal funds so that that project does not stop when the ARPA funds run out. Um, and of course, all new stuff is coming in, is being digitized immediately. So we're taking a lot of things. All of the permits that come in online are already, all those submittal items are electronic. Um, and so we're not creating new paper that has to be scanned in later. Trying to be as efficient with that as possible. And so any questions on any of that stuff? Okay. And then just, uh, before I move it on to Marissa, just a couple of things going on. One is there's an O M B meeting, um, Olympia Master Builders, but it's the Mason County portion. They're meeting this Wednesday at, uh, Builders First Source and both, um, Josh Luck and I will be going to that. We have our new code enforcement person in the building side starting on Monday, February third. And, um, and then our permit assistance center is getting new cubicle furniture. Um, our maintenance department has been spending a lot of time with us and they have transformed our permit center. So we have new carpet, which is the same as this carpet, uh, paint and ceiling tiles. Um, we'll be getting our furniture mid-month of February. And every single person, once it's all done, every single person in the office will have moved except for me. So, um, it's been a good time of people going through old stuff that we just don't need anymore, um, cleaning up. And we've swapped our building department over to the planning side and planning over to the building side. It gives building department more space and better furniture. Um, and the planners are, they have the,
Yes, it will.
They hand me down furniture. But, uh, so at some point we'll have a, an open house to check out our new, uh, permit center.
But we're always welcome to walk through it.
But any, yeah, walk through anytime. Right now it looks like a, we could have a gym.
Yeah.
Open up maybe. I even did a cartwheel last week.
Did?
Well, I tried. I tempted.
And that's kind of scary.
Yeah, it was very scary, actually.
Um, the one item I have is a news release, um, that I'm asking for approval to read on February fourth. And this has to do with the Allen UGA community meeting, um, that we're having on February twenty-seventh, um, six to eight. And, um, we originally advertised it in North Bay Review for the sixth and thirteenth. Um, but we're hoping to do a news release just to get it out there that we've changed it. It's already been updated on our website and in the mailers that we sent out, um, as well as I've gotten it to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the North Mason Chamber of Commerce that give out to their members that it's rescheduled as well. So just hoping to do a news release so we get it out there to more people.
No issue.
And is it at the hub?
Uh, the Port of Allen.
The Port of, oh, okay.
Yeah, Port of Allen.
In Allen.
Oh, perfect. It's even better. And tonight you have the PAC meeting.
Tonight we have Planning Advisory Commission at six.
At six, in here?
In here, yep.
Okay. I know I plan on attending.
I will also be there.
Did you notify? I know you did.
We both did.
You, we both did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then we should be safe. I just would hate for, get in trouble, especially there, people watch that one.
No, we, we notified it our last meeting.
Yeah, I remember you doing it for sure, so.
Yep.
Cool, cool.
Yep. Yeah, and let us know if you need anything. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to our, uh, central services.
Now we find out if she runs out. I've been waiting. Almost on time.
Almost. That sounds sarcastic.
No, four minutes, that's not bad.
That's not bad from us making everybody late. That's okay.
Um, so I do have a few items to come before you today. Uh, first I did want to touch on the, um, Planning Advisory Commission interviews. We have had three interviews. There is one at large position. I wasn't sure if you guys wanted to make a decision today with who to move forward with or if you wanted a little bit of extra time.
Do we want to review our notes on the others or are we good to go?
I can talk about it anytime, but we can also wait until the next week too. I don't, I don't mind.
We can also do it during a commission discussion.
Yeah.
You know what? If, let's do it next week. And that way I can go through and refresh my journal.
Okay. Um, so the first item I have is the order of sale for the twenty twenty-five tax title auction. There are eighteen total tax title properties. I believe only three would be brought forward. Um, a lot of them are titans. Some of them, Richard Beckman has suggested were unmarketable. Um, so we do have three and if we, if all parcels sold for the minimum bid, uh, excluding any listing and recording fees, the total would be forty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, Richard Beckman has reached out a handful of times with individuals interested in those properties, but they have to go through the tax title process.
We can't do anything until, and even then we have to surplus them.
Yep.
These three parcels have been surplus already. We have attempted to sell them twice and they did not sell. So.
Where, where they, where they located, where they located, man, uh, man, treasure?
Two of them are driveways. And the other one, I don't remember directly.
I remember we had a few, because the P U D had to get permission from us for what we had for the driveways. But we must have taken it many years ago for some other purpose. But I remember a few of those too. But we must have taken it many years ago for some other purpose, but I remember a few of those too.
Yeah, three she had listed and I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me. Two of them are driveways or proposed strips that would be either an easement for a driveway or, or driveway. And the other one I don't remember.
It shows us one forty East Royce Road in Greatview.
Although, yeah, that particular one has not, yeah. That particular one has been a um, code enforcement issue. Um, it has a health department lien on it and.
Does it have a minimum on that pension?
So.
The minimum would be forty-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
The bulk of that money would go to the health department for their lien.
What are, instead of hanging on to that forever, do we have any options of uh, changing the minimum on that stuff?
In that particular parcel, you would have to reduce the lien.
Right.
Or release the lien.
Release the lien, yeah.
The help, yeah, so in order to, to lower the amount that's due on that, something would have to happen with the lien.
And then the other two.
The taxes are minimal on those two parcels. The only one that would bring any value in would be the.
Dog with the lien.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we are having a tax foreclosure sale and it's timed to the schedule for March, um, sixth and seventh. And so if you do order, do approve this order of sale, which we're reading on the fourth, we would add these three particular parcels to that sale so that we do it always.
So what is this? I immediately assumed that's what we were talking about was the tax. I was shocked with how few that we had then. Uh, so what is this then?
This is tax titled properties that have been foreclosed on at a prior foreclosure sale.
And that's why Richard's involved, that's why, that makes a lot more sense.
Well, I'm good with moving forward.
So do we have to do it every year or so? Is that what you're thinking, or did we already do this once and we'll just revisit it?
I remember doing them in the past, but I can't remember.
So we did several years ago clean up the list.
Yeah.
And we sold several parcels and so what you see here of the eighteen, I think Kenzie said, they're mostly tidelands or remnant parcels that have no value. And so we've just held on to them. There's really no basis for trying to sell them. Um, I would still question attempting to sell the two parcels that are.
Yeah.
Um, we can attempt it.
Right.
Um, again, we have attempted to sell these before at a tax title sale, twice, and they did not sell. So we would be attempting to do it again. Um, the cost to the county is fairly negligible in that we would include the recording fees in the sale price. So if they did sell, those fees would, you know, we would collect those apart for sale. But.
So the, the driveways, are those to somebody's private property? To a house, to a?
Um, well, so. So one of the parcels is a paint driveway, which would be access to parcels. The other one is. Is somebody's driveway. I don't know what to tell you. They, the parcels, we attempted to get the owners at the time to, to redeem them and, you know, keep them off as textile property, but that didn't happen. But they, you know, they just honestly don't know why they didn't redeem them at the time. They're of no use to anybody but the property owner specifically.
Right.
If you attempt to sell them at a tax title, a sell down, then you could, and they don't sell, then it gives you a year to try to privately negotiate with an owner, which may, you know, bring that back.
Right, right, okay.
It's a very short time period, but if you attempt to sell on a different sale, it kinda starts that clock for private negotiations.
Right, right.
The one forty East Royces, Royces just off of the ones we sold, uh, I think you were here when we sold it to the uh, auto wrecking place. Those properties down there. This is right by that, it just stood up.
Okay. All right, um, Commissioner, do you wanna move it forward? Go ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm kind of lost on what happens if we don't move it forward?
It stays, it just stays in, in, as tax title property, so nothing happens to it. Mason County continues to manage the property until such time as we attempt to sell it again. Really nothing yet. It just kinda, it stays out there in limbo.
And the, attempting to sell it resets the clock to allow us to try and.
Right, and if you sell it, it gets it back on the tax roll. So if somebody were to purchase it, it would become, you know, comes back on the tax roll. And so it's always good to maintain and review and do this thing. So I'm not here to talk about against it, I'm just trying to bring the history back forward. So you wear where you are, where we are at least.
And you'll be throwing these on the March one? You'll be throwing them on the March tax sale?
We would include them in our sale in March.
If we approve them.
So we have a very short turnaround time, so you would have to approve them on the fourth or we do.
Put them on. Let's get them on right away and so you can include them and make those assessed after we've been a year.
Because it doesn't sound like they're gonna sell at the auction.
I would be very surprised, but you know.
But you never know. If you don't ask, the answer is no, so. We used to have huge amounts of properties. That's when we brought in Realtors to end up, change the structure and how we did it. Cleaned up a lot of it. Shorecrest, remember we used to have tons of Shorecrest property and.
So my next item is a discussion around active threat shooter training. Uh, this was brought forward a while ago. It's just taken a little bit of time to get everybody together. Um, so this is something that the sheriff's office would come in and assist with. I believe we're gonna rope John in as well, being emergency management. But essentially this would be kind of an active shooter training that we would. Um, we'd have the officers come in and kind of do like a role play situation. You know, what does staff do if someone comes in with, you know, a gun? How do we react? And this would be coordinated with um, between the commissioner's office, assessor, auditor, and treasurer. Uh, we just have to find a good day that works for everybody. Um, we could do a half-day closure and we would, you know, let the public know, hey, we're closing temporarily for this. It could be all day. I don't think we need all day. But I just wanted to.
The video I just went through doesn't help. Cover it.
But this was just to kinda, kinda get it out there, get the discussion going, see if this was something that you would be interested in. We could do just the first floor and then the second floor later, or vice versa. Um, and then Mark suggested incorporating this into the county's overall safety plan.
No issue, I.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's needed.
Yeah. More training, let's do it.
All right, and then.
Welcome to Commissioner Land.
Uh, my next item is a request for a letter of support for the City of Shelton Cross Town Trail Project. Um, this was brought forward by Kevin from the E D C. He had brought this um, to Mark. It does have a really tight turnaround, so Mark would sign it and we would get it out immediately.
That isn't what you have. You have Mark sign it on one page, but you have us sign it on the other. For, in order for us to sign it, you have to get it on the agenda for uh, our meeting immediately.
Yes, I did um, update the actual letter to have just Mark's signature because they will need it and update today.
Okay, I have no problem with allowing Mark to sign it.
I think it's great.
Okay. And then my last item, I was just a general discussion about the Mason County Law Enforcement Officer and Firefighters Plan. So that's our left board. Uh, there has been discussion about moving that under Human Resources. And then I know Commissioner Nedleyland mentioned some discussion around the dental plan. Um, so just kinda seeing what your guys' thoughts were on that.
So to figure, and I served on that board for many, many years, uh, they didn't used to have a dental plan. But we went ahead and we granted a dental plan. It was within a strict parameter. Uh, right now they wanna increase it, so it's two separate issues. But then the other one came up that since all these years, it's always talking about benefits and, you know, for their health benefits, for their, you know, medical, dental and stuff like that, that perhaps it's under the wrong place all these years, but we had Diane. So everything fell underneath Diane. Well, Diane's not there anymore. So the question becomes, do we have to fall underneath H R, or do we still continue to do what we're doing? I know that H R had made a comment about, well, you take border uh, uh, equalization and stuff like that. Uh, it's not their call, it's our call what we decide to do, but that's what I know about it. And I, are, so are you asking us if we want to uh, switch it? Are you asking us if we wanna have a, a, another meeting to have the discussions about that, or what exactly are we?
How much time does, does that, the left board take for? Um, our staff?
I don't believe it takes too much time. I know currently Danielle will prep the agendas and she'll take the minutes and she'll clerk the meetings. Typically the meetings are maybe five, ten minutes.
Yeah.
Um, I think most of it just comes from, I mean, we do pay the left bills, so that does play a part in that. But we would continue paying those whether left is under Central Services or if it's under Human Resources. Um, there is a lot of time spent when, you know, the members do bring forward, hey, we wanna increase dental, or hey, we wanna look at this. We do spend a lot of time with the research on that. Um, that isn't really our wheelhouse when it comes to benefits. I mean, we're more than happy to look into those things. Um, but I do think it would be helpful for H R to be involved since they are a lot more benefit-driven than we are.
Usually the meetings can be short, but they can also be half an hour, hour long, depending on what the question is. For the most part, what comes before us is all their bills for medical, that are the people that are on this. And we have to decide whether it fits within the parameters of what's allowed, uh, which sometimes it's not. You know, sometimes they come to us and they want a certain type of false teeth with all these different things and we have to deny because of the maximums twenty-five hundred, I believe at this point, for dental. Uh, medical, you have to make sure that, they have to verify that it came through a doctor, through an actual, you know, a request from a doctor or a prescription, so to speak. So there is work that goes on, but again, doesn't necessarily have to be the staff that we have under Support Services, especially since now things are changing. And we do have an opportunity to look at the uh, uh, Board of Equalization because we have some retired. And so that may come underneath, because for the most part, that one takes a lot more work and that one uh, that one literally, uh, there's a lot of, a lot of meetings that come with that. But again, should that one even be in H R? Probably not. It doesn't make sense for it to be in that, yeah.
Yeah, I wish that we had brought this conversation up before that job had been posted. Because now would be the perfect time to do it. Doesn't mean that we can't do it still.
And we could.
And so.
Because it hasn't been filled, that position, right?
Right.
I believe they're gonna be interviewing soon for it.
Yeah, so we can change the job descriptions of what they're applying for, that's.
Yeah, it doesn't change the, the range, right? If we, if we.
No.
It would be the same.
Well, we can put it underneath the people we already have and not have to fill it. There's always that option as well. If anything, if we did that, I would recommend we table the other ones, the interviews even. We don't wanna be, we just, I'd say, because you weren't here, that's one of the things you were upset about and I don't blame you. But uh, all of a sudden, we were put in a situation where jobs were promised and things were happening and it was like, what the heck? I, I haven't seen that happen before and it was, and it is my opinion, it threw monkey wrench in everything. But uh, so I'd rather not let that happen again.
Yeah, I, I, I would kinda like to hold off on even this, table this until we take a look at the B O E, the civil service and the left.
And that's why I asked it to be brought forward, so we can find out if that's what we wanna have the discussion, so it sounds like.
Yeah, and it doesn't. Unless we're going to change the job description for H R.
Only if it doesn't affect the budget.
Yeah.
Actually, it could be a benefit to the budget because left board could easily fit underneath some of the work that one of the, in my opinion, one of the uh, people that's already working over there could roll left into their duties pretty easily. Uh, with some of the stuff, we'd reach out, work together if they have to find more questions, such as uh, we have a now created provision where we pay for their long-term care. Uh, we had to go out, find out what the going rates were. We do that every year to, uh, so we do ten thousand a month, that's much, that's a lot, I know, but that's what it actually is. Well, you know it, of all people, you know. That's what it actually is for our areas, so that's what we can pay up to. So, yeah, I, it may be a cost savings.
So would you like me to reach out to H R and have them postpone interviews? Or what, I mean, what is my path forward for that?
Honestly, I would like to wait on, I mean, just me, I would like to wait on the interviews. And I know we have a date certain, February twenty-first, I believe, is when Becky is retired.
I believe so. I know it's, it's right around there.
Pretty short window.
It is, but if we're gonna make a change, we should do it now.
And for the most part, they clerk those meetings more than a lot of other stuff. So if we had to send a staff member over to clerk it, or have somebody else within the department clerk it as a, a time saver while we're considering these things, I.
I'm gonna help. This way, this way we do it, right? So, if we could.
Well, I'll, I'll agree with you if that's what you wanna do. I, I, I'm not even there with you. Don't wanna step over Pat.
I'm seeing three nods.
Okay, have them postpone and we'll.
Seeing four nods now.
Oh, I'm nodding with you. So I'll, I'll reach out to them and then we will bring this back next Monday. And I know Mark and Mary will be here, so it'll be a, there'll be a lot more.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd like to know, I mean, yeah. So, ah, now I've got questions. If we do this, how does that affect our hiring? You know, posting the job and, and things like that? Does it? I don't know.
That's one of the reasons for putting it off, because the one that would answer that question is not here.
Right, right, well, we could always go to Tim.
Yeah.
We get Tim's opinion on that.
Yeah, get ready to have things run across the room eventually.
Cause I, I am also gonna be posting for our department, so.
And that might change that job description too.
It would, it would, cause right now Danielle does do the backup for B O E. And so if we're gonna take over. And left.
Yep.
Um, so if we're gonna take over primary on B O E, it would be quite a change for that position, which could kinda funnel into our front desk position as well.
Can you, can you think about what you'd like to see? Because ultimately, these are people under, under you and Mark. And so if you could think about what you'd like to see in that position to, to make it work perfectly?
Okay.
As close to perfect as possible.
Okay.
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, so I am next and the only thing that I have for you is the um, renewal of the agreement, the inter-local agreement with the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization, or the T M B H A S O.
And that's when we put Pat on?
This is for um, the reimbursement to the clerk's office, Superior Court Prosecutor's Office, and Public Defense for involuntary treatment court costs and it's.
Which normally I would ask, what are we actually doing with that? Cause our sheriff's department has not wanted to do a lot of these things up until now, but at the same time, I think it has to continue. Uh, Pat, this is what I do every time, the only problem is you just started. So Pat, you're on that board. What is your opinion? What would you like us to do?
Well, from what I've talked about, hey, so we need to move it forward, it helps out, but um, greets, graces the skins, makes things easier to take care of some of these uh, things. And the T M B H A O S. That, it's a, it's an L L C, so it's, it's a, you know, N G O, it's a non-government organization.
Yep.
That's where the agreement's gotta come in.
So do you like to move it forward?
Yes.
And I, I will support that.
Yeah, me too. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I think I must be next then.
You are.
Yes, you are. So I'm asking for uh, I'm asking to reclass uh one of my maintenance two workers from a two to a three. Um for a simple reasoning that we've took on building ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Belfair shop and he has stepped up to the plate. As you know, I have a guy on FMLA. And so he has stepped up and done that, so and he meets the criteria's that we have. He's got his certifications to do that. So I would like to move him to be the three. With that being said, I'm gonna need some help in the yards. So I have nobody right now, so I'm looking for a seasonal. I'm not looking for a full-time person. I'm not, I'm looking for that same Park Sky, that same, you know. To uh get a seasonal to come in and help just mow lawns for five months. I have no benefits with that uh.
Straight across the board.
No medical benefits.
Yeah, uh is this something, any chance that you can uh run duties through REIT to be able to utilize uh REIT funding?
Sure, I could use, I mean, I, I do use REIT funding now. Whenever I got any REIT funding, my guys code into REIT and we can, I mean. Ab- absolutely, I mean, I try to do that as we speak.
But if we could do that, you know, at one point, we were completely broke and we found all the different ways we can do it to utilize. And we all know how I feel about our budget right now. Uh being able to utilize a REIT, it does not have a direct impact on our general fund. It, it's a special fund from the side. Well, at one point, we, I think we had three employees through you at one time to utilize REIT when we were at our lowest.
The only, the only thing I would say tough about that is REIT this year is all building ten. I mean, they're sucking everything I have for REIT. I don't have, I don't get no other REIT projects to speak of.
No, for what we've given so far, but what do we have available within REIT to be able to utilize it? Is there money that's available if, if we added to them?
I mean, we always budget a couple hundred thousand for maintenance.
Yeah.
Uh and for benefit or for salaries and benefits, we do budget, I believe it's around seventy-five thousand, but.
But we have the capacity is what I'm saying, within REIT, right now.
We just have to be careful. Because um, you know, what we're spending on maintenance in REIT, there's limitations and um reporting requirements and so. Um yeah, we just have to be careful that we stay under that amount.
I agree, but at the same time, it is a tool we can use to keep uh from, from the general fund expenditures. Which gives us ability to do things like this thing with the sheriff. So I, I'm supportive either way, uh it's just one commissioner. I would like a CS utilize it out of REIT so that we don't have the impact on our general fund. Uh and that's my opinion.
I would say that it. Twenty-two thousand bucks is what we're looking at. Um I could probably eat that in my budget to, to a degree. I mean, I gave back a hundred and eighty last year, so.
Well, that's cause we gave you everything though. We put, we put free tasks that there was under the sun on, under you and expected you to get it done. And you can't, you couldn't do everything that we asked of you.
Yeah, no. I, I support it, I think. You've got a great team. You guys do amazing work.
I gotta tell you, I, I, I'm.
And you've saved us.
I mean, I can't say that. When they do the, the, some of these jobs that we would have to contract out, there's no comparison.
Nope.
But.
There is potential in the, in the near future that I'd come back and ask for another jump up with somebody. Cause I need to do some planning for, I plan on leaving in about three years, three and a half years. Uh the person that I had uh to take that position and get and move forward is definitely going on FMLA and. I am.
I didn't know what it was like not to have you here. I really wouldn't.
I wouldn't know either.
You were here and, and, but it was interesting though, when I first started here, we had some people working for us that was, in my opinion, not doing the jobs at all. Every time I'd walk by, I'd see the, the person leading it, hanging on the wall, talking, laughing and stuff like that. Then all of a sudden, we'd call in to get something done. Here, with Kelly, we'd come in and he fixed it and he disappeared, go do his thing. Got to the point where we just started saying, why the hell aren't we just calling Kelly and just putting it up there and. That was one of the best decisions we've made since I've been here, Kelly.
Thank you.
We'll discuss your, your title later.
Okay. I see Lisa's not sure.
She's not gonna allow it.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss Lisa's too, but.
Forty, oh she's got forty.
Lisa's got forty-six, I think, and I got thirty-four.
When she's dead, it was supposed to be forty-eight. Think about that.
No, I think that's great.
We, we, she was crawling and we hired her. She was on the floor crawling, you're a child.
What do you think?
Yeah, I, I think we move forward with it.
I would say we have good lawns. We've always had a decent lawns out there and I hate, would hate to. Step back and not do what we've been doing.
For sure. For sure. No, I like it.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
Good midday, Commissioner.
Would you like two keys come up?
I didn't want it.
Here, give it to her right here.
So I have two items. I, I would like to ask to table one of them, which is the foothill dog park donation application. Because I don't think it's complete enough for us to get a cost and I would hate to make a commitment without having an idea of what that cost may be. Not that we may not be able to do it, but again, I would like to make sure we set, plan the project out. And be able to know exactly what we need to do as opposed to making guesses. So if we could table that, I would appreciate it. The second item we have is to renew a contract for uh concessions for Mason County Little League. Uh it is a continuation of a contract, so we would renew that contract. The vendor's been there for, I think, two years, a little over two years. So they've been doing an excellent job, so we'd like to, to support them and ask the commission to support them as well. In their contract renewal for the twenty-twenty-five. Baseball year.
I'm supportive.
And that's all I have.
Appreciate that. All right, any questions for staff or anybody? Nope.
Hi, Kev, you're up, buddy. Go get him. Don't be scared, okay?
Oh, Kevin.
No, Kevin, you have to sit right here.
I'm just here for mental.
That's right.
To carry out the bodies.
Mental or emotional?
Either way, though.
Whatever's needed.
See which way the meeting starts going.
Commissioner Taraswell, I'm not sure if you've met our solid waste manager, Kevin Gilson. I know you've been thrown lots of names.
He was, he was here on my first meeting.
Perfect.
First briefing.
But not the second.
Yeah, I missed the second one. I apologize for that. I had a little, had to get up to Belfair to make sure it opened in time. There was a little snap that we had to take care of, but we got it.
All right, well, that's our agenda request. We'll kick it off to, to Kevin and Richard and. We're needing to buy a big piece of equipment.
All right, uh. So, we're here for, ask for permission to purchase a new John Deere one-thirty P excavator for the public works solid waste division. Uh after a thorough evaluation of the current excavator's condition and considerations of both replacement options. Uh in repair, it is recommended to purchase a new John Deere excavator for the Eels Hill Transfer Station. Uh the existing excavator has exceeded ten thousand operating hours, surpassing the expected life. Of seven to ten thousand hours per John Deere's guidelines. The estimated repair cost for the current machine is one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand eight-hundred-and-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. With an additional ninety-seven hundred dollars per month required to run a replacement unit during the repair period. Given the machine's age and extensive wear, replacing it with a new unit is more cost-effective option. The John Deere excavator is priced at two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty dollars and eight cents. With a fifty thousand dollar trade-in allowance for the existing unit. This brings the total purchase cost, including tax and delivery, to two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and seven cents.
So when they repair it, they just jack the whole thing up and plug a new one in and throw it away, they just.
Pretty darn close.
Seems like it.
Kevin, maybe a quickie rundown of like how this thing gets hours and hours every day. Like, how is that used in our operation?
This machine runs seven days a week. We're open nine hours a day. And it's, it's running non-stop except for the four days a year we're closed.
I think you told us in our SWAC meeting how many hours over.
Yeah, we're actually at a, I, I believe we're at eleven thousand hours on the machine. And like, like this, what John Deere recommends is replacing it at seven to ten thousand, so we've, we've gone over that and it's, it's been a great machine. The attachments we got for it are just to that exact machine, which we have two of. And we have one sitting there ready for when we get a replacement machine to attach that, so we can put it straight to work when we, when we receive it.
So I have absolutely no issue with this. The reason why is uh, is that this is not one to go looking for used or anything else. It's just. The, the need and, and the amount of hours of work that go on it, you have to start from brand new. Uh the only question I would have is uh, are we looking at sole source? Have we gone out to Sourcewell, see if we can get more for our trade-in? See if we can get or negotiate their price down?
Uh so the excavator will be purchased off sole source.
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell, sorry. Uh purchasing contract from Pape Machinery. So we went with Pape because that, that, like I said, those two attachments that we have are only for this machine. And we actually had them specially made for solid waste.
So you go through corporate or you go through a dealership?
Sourcewell is a state contract that's already going out and looking at and securing best prices. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but that's. Basically, that's what they're doing. They're already doing that work for us.
Okay.
You already have more trade-in, but the undercarriage is shot.
That's why we're getting rid of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The new one they're gonna purchase with an automatic greasing system. So in the environment that they're working in is probably not getting greased as much as it should. Um and I wouldn't like it either, so uh this new system on here should extend the life a little more.
It's probably greased, but not kind of that you need for that.
It's greased, it's, it's a pretty greasy machine here. It's greased up.
I am supportive.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Definitely.
Good deal.
So the difference between repair and.
And this is a critical element. They can't, they can't be down.
Oh, no.
It's been down before, so we had the, what's the grizzly?
The grizzly, yeah.
Cylinder a week. I remember that.
Kevin, and it screwed this machine handle, I mean, on, on average, every hour that they're open, eighteen tons of solid waste every hour.
So we're only be hearing about the uh scale for North Mason.
Oh.
Oh, I thought you meant the inbound scale coming in then.
We, we're, we're purchasing a scale, but not North Mason's scale.
Well, eventually we have to do it. We're, we're, we're bleeding our, our money uh to, to get that.
Can you kinda give Commissioner Nellerland an update about what we talked about in the SWAC meeting? And the, the plan forward? Looking at. So, so there, there are plans to go to make big improvements, maybe even relocating the Belfair station.
Gotcha, I know what you're talking about. Okay.
There's a lot going on there.
Yeah, there was, that was, that was funny.
There was, there was a lot going on in that meeting, yeah, yeah. But so there are plans because Belfair's growing. There's, there's no going back. And so probably the best idea is to, to expand maybe even.
Be nice if we could actually ask Kitsap Kenix to keep track of people going in there. How much uh bleeding are we doing? Cause that'd make a difference for how much, you know, we're bringing in and they don't even consider us.
Right?
Yeah, we already have great numbers about how much household hazardous waste is going to get out.
So let's find out.
And by what zip code. It's amazing.
It'll help to tell us how much we can afford to pay and we need to do something soon, cause we're, we're just losing all that. But plus, it's bad for our constituents. They have to, when our constituents are taking their stuff out of our county to get service. That's not too good. There's a lot of, they're driving all the way from Duwado, all the way down and then go up into Kitsap, cause it's not that far from our facility.
Is that why you're improving those roads up there or not?
Yeah.
Paving faster route up there. Yeah, so that's exciting for sure, the modernization plan and just thinking ahead, looking ahead.
It is exciting, yes. Yeah, there are some bills that we're gonna have to, at the legislature right now that we're gonna have to watch, so.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you for the, well, there are a lot of bills. Mike and I were talking about the transportation bills this morning and I know Kevin and Richard have been. There's definitely solid waste always and then some utility things of interest as well.
Yeah, can you think Stephanie for the report that she made at the SWAC meeting? I think she did a good job.
She's great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's helpful. I don't, I think that's something that has not necessarily been presented in prior.
You know, maybe that would be a good presentation for one of our briefings. I think it would be.
Yeah, definitely, we can do that. And I don't know, Richard, if you were, just the tonnage too, just the quantities on, was that rolled up in staffs or, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that part's.
Yeah, recycling and all the solid waste.
It was, it was very information.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Never get much about solid waste, probably don't, I got no more than one, I don't know.
You know, I never thought I would know what I know about sewers, trash or roads or.
Stuff that nobody even thinks about.
Right, right, until it doesn't work.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Pat, to throw in some, I just thought of, you may not even know how that one works up there. Uh unlike Kitsap County and Eels Hill where you have a scale, they come in, they're, they're charged by the barrel, by square footage and stuff like that. And it can be very, very uh independently decided. And people get very upset about that, of course. Well, I didn't have only that much. I, 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 I should have only been charged. And so they just don't take it there. They just go, go for the weight and the simplicity of it, but.
Yeah, I'm excited about the, the path forward. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be fun. Well, it'll be interesting.
Oh, it's gonna be good.
Yeah, the other solid waste news is you're close to um getting a bid out or bid request out for deconditioning the wells.
Remaining groundwater monitoring wells and the gas monitoring wells.
That is exciting.
Yeah, we'll get rid of all twelve of them. Well, there's two left, we'll leave for, I'm gonna confirm though, which two for sure, for Department of. DOC, I can direct corrections and the City of Shelton for their own spray field.
Oh, right, okay.
Do you wanna take those out?
I have something else for them when they're done.
We're, we're done.
Okay, something for us to consider, reminding, and I'm sorry if I say some things that's redundant. I just wanna make sure you know. If we're going forward, cause we'll all learn as we, as we hit different parts. Uh them being a standalone fund of their own, uh it won't affect what I'm about to say, doesn't affect our general fund. You made a comment that you have an opportunity or perhaps an opportunity to pick up a, a four in uh wastewater and, and water. Although we're looking for a smaller one, we've been really good at saving money by doing some redundancies. Sometimes it pays off big time. Like we've got, we've got extra uh um pumps and stuff like that. The time, the effort, everything just saved us money. We already had them. This is an opportunity I'd hate to see us lose out on. If he has that, even if we set it up for a year or a two-year cycle, so he can have the training, he can have all these. They're hard to come by and that redundancy is, this is one time where I think it'd be very beneficial to the county. Uh I know he's not, has an asshole, but maybe he should, uh I don't know, I'm just telling you from our conversation, I thought about it a lot. I thought we should be talking about that. Uh still be able to get your, you know, they have a lot of turnover in this, in this particular venue. Not because we're bad to deal with, because they're just so valuable and hard to come up with, so everybody will steal them over and over and over again. So with that, I thought I'd bring that up to the commission to consider. It doesn't affect our, our ending fund balance with the general fund at all. But it's a good opportunity, if you think it's a good opportunity, to be able to uh have that type of knowledge in your hands right there.
Oh, you, you know, it, it, it kind of a mentor type role, really. That's what, what we need. That's what we're missing. I don't know, just we don't have really FTEs or budgeted. But if there was some way I could get like a temporary, even a contract for a year or two, I'm not even sure if this individual would be interested, but. I know he's looking for work.
Yeah, I know we have. I just hadn't thought about it. That, if, I like it a lot as a contract.
So maybe you guys should think about it and.
It'd be hard because literally if I was to, just to try to hire him as an operator, he would be an OIT because he doesn't have the water. And so then I'd have to offer him a job at twenty-two bucks an hour. I'd say, no way, I know he won't take that.
Right, right.
But if, if they come up with something.
Would you guys?
Alternate.
Would you guys be interested?
I'd like to see, I like, I like to see it on paper.
Yeah, well, I don't want to prove it either, I, but before we can see it on paper, I think, can I?
I'd like to see the pros and cons.
They've, definitely, there are pros and cons for sure. Obviously financial, but we also have succession planning. We also have a lot of things on that front. That we need to consider as well, so.
I'm not as close as Kelly, but.
But?
But.
I could be, I could be ahead of it, but I don't want to be.
So great.
Yeah, please look at it and bring it back to us so we can have that discussion.
Okay. Commissioner, anything to add?
I think I'm good.
Well, I have so much, but no, I don't, I don't.
Uh, soon I'd love to have an update on those roads and the the. The, uh, the lights crosswalk in his district. Stuff like that, and then we just had that accident. Can you find out? Was, I from one of my, I hear so many different rumors. Uh, I understand that it may have been a person that had been intoxicated pulling out of McDonald's. Up there in Belfair, motorcycle accident. The gentleman is alive, from what I understand, which is great to hear, but the person lost their leg and everything else and. So if you can look at it, because we eventually are gonna have to have some further conversations, and if it is. People want to connect it to the residential, but it may have nothing to do with that, but it's still gonna be the same issue, people pulling out into it. We may have to have a discussion with the state about slowing the the road until after that intersection. Currently, right now, there's a right-hand turn and somebody says sees that road, they're hitting fifty. And that person turns, this one's turning out, thinking there's nobody, just the one. And I've seen it a million times myself, and not supposed to make a left turn there, but you cannot legislate stupid. You just can't. So the question becomes, should there be a divider there?
Yeah, that's definitely one we'll have to bring to the state, because it's a state.
But we need to.
State road.
See if that's what we want to even push for, but I'd like to find out what happened, what we have, and maybe get the information on the statistics for accidents on that.
Well, and I really want the the bypass to go through, so I don't want to interrupt any of those conversations at all.
This shouldn't, especially, uh, because we talked to Rourke and stuff in the past about it, it's just whether or not it was needed. Uh, the no left-hand turn sign just isn't obviously cutting it unless it is. This accident may have nothing to do with anything we just discussed. The only way to find out is to ask you to find out.
All right, they had one too many Big Macs. Food coma.
Thanks, please.
All of the above.
All right, now we're going down a hole. All right, anything else for? Nothing for us? Anything else for us? All right, thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
See you shortly.
All right, so the last thing on our agenda is Commissioner discussion, we're gonna. Probably put, if you can, if you could add the the discussion about. The PAC member on Monday's briefing, is that good? And I have nothing.
The only other thing was I've been poring over the I L L agree, I L A agreement. Between Bremerton and Mason County for that. And I have not found anybody that can answer this question. And there, it talks about. Uh, this agreement would create a special sewer district.
But I I I remember some of it, and not of it because of this, but because of other things, once for commissioner and stuff like that. What it says, and it sounds like I'm supportive of it, I'm not. I'm just giving you the answer, because I'm not supportive of it. What it says there is it will not create what's what's basically a utility district. Which would make it a standalone thing where they can charge their own rates and and collect the taxes, stuff like that, that this won't do this. This will just allow for an agreement to utilize that property. That's what that.
So that's, that's number two, the administration of the agreement. Spells out exactly what you're saying. But then you drop down here to the the new number five, and it says the county sells. The county shall set up a special sewer service district and billing area. Is that like a line item in the budget or what what is that?
What they're asking for on that is for us to set up our own thing, so that they would. Remembering in the past, when they came out to look at it, they had said specifically and outwardly that it's not their long term, it's their short term. As soon as they have a services and stuff, they want to be able to cut theirs off and be able to utilize it and keep it for themselves. Uh, the only problem with that is we'd have so much that gets invested into that. So what they're basically telling me is, is it still would have to be a standalone agreement with them. They would like to run their own. They would like to to charge their customers that are within their area their amount, so they get a little more money and stuff like that. That's what they're asking for. But again, even though it sounds like a means for them, I'm not, I want to make that clear. And I'd love to have an actual conversation at some point. We could even have it now about why I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm trying to wade through all of this and and determine it, just. I'm used to reading contracts and when there's something that's very ill-defined, it's a big red flag to me. It's like, what? You can't do this. You can't put a vague thing in a contract and expect me to sign it.
You and I agree a lot on that one, and please don't think that that's, quite often it is accidental, but quite often it's not. It's just not. People know what they're doing and how they're setting it up, because they're trying to take care of themselves, but that's their their job. I'm not begrudging them. That's their job. If the property owner's trying to do it, they're trying to benefit the property. That's cool. That's what it's supposed to do. Our job is to make sure that ours is benefited. In this situation, uh, uh, I think you're right to always question it, not just because of this. But I've learned in all my years, they, you're not paranoid, they really are out to get you.
Yeah, so what if we, maybe Mackenzie, you can add this on to Monday's briefing. Also, I'll have Tim, Loretta, Mark.
Well, I'm I'm meeting with with Loretta. On this as well as some other things out there, the Beville Loop Road issues, I got. People are angry about stuff.
Welcome aboard.
No problem with that.
They're all good people. We do our best that we can, and sometimes, Pat, on some of those situations, there's things they don't know. For example, we've dealt with another one in the past where it was rotted out from the underneath, so the option is. You leave it like it is and try to keep the road open and somebody maybe falls through, remember that one metal one that was fall through? Uh, or you close it, because the third option is twenty million dollars. And we don't have it. And there's twenty-one people using it. And we don't, and we have to consider all that. They don't want us to. They'll talk about, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus on it, but they'll throw things that you like, you know, it's a safety issue, it's a fire issue. But you know what? There is no guarantee when you live down a road that you're gonna have a second way in. And when you purchase the property, you purchased it knowing you were on the outside. That's why you got it at a cheaper price. That's just the way it is.
That'll be, that'll be a fun discussion.
And again, I'm not talking specifically on this one, but find out what the cost is to replace it, because they want you to place it. How? Even if we were to do a road improvement district for them to help them, because some of these, just to handle their their residential, how? Because they couldn't afford to do it. How could we be expected to do it? We have a lot of dirt roads. They knew that when they purchased it. We have a lot of roads that are out in the boonies. They knew that when they purchased it.
It's also good to talk to the sheriff's office to see how many calls they have on the road, see, you know, what what is their response time.
We can't take on the liability of making a a private road, a county road unless it's brought up to code.
We're dealing with one right now, we're having discussions on it, which is raise a road. They may not go for it, they may go for it. They've been asking for years to do it. They've lost their money. Uh, from the HOAs several times. Uh, it's just a horrible thing, but. We can't, when you buy your property and it's private property, we already know we are not supposed to invest the tax dollars. Into a private investment so that they make a bunch of money off it. They carry their own weight. An R I D dis, road improvement district would have them pay for basically their share of it. We pay for the other shares that connect to it, if it happens. They always want to say, well, it's your road. It's not our road, it's it's private. Uh, they always want to say that we should pay for it. We can't pay for it all, but this is what you'll deal with over and over and over again. And I would love to do this for them. I think it'd be great for my county if we did it, the economic development, the other aspects of it. But I would never come to this commission and ask us to spend money for private property. Unless they're carrying their own share, there's a direct benefit to the county. I think we're all should be held by that, right? It's just how it is. So good luck with your, with the people there, but, you know, and and actually, you also have one thing going for you. It's, we can find ways to justify things, but it is illegal for us to give the people's money for private enterprise. Has to be for a a general purpose that is beneficial to the county. Uh, it's a gifting of public funds. You've seen it before, heard about it many times. We want to always make sure and apologize to them if it's a private road.
Definition of general welfare.
Yeah, especially if there's ten people on it, it's hard to justify hundreds of thousands of dollars for ten people's property.
Well, and this is why we have hearings on things like this too, because that way we get all the public's comment and.
Something I can share with you.
Facts, not the fiction.
Yeah, with roads is fifty-five, it's between thirty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars per mile to add to do a chip seal road, but that's when it's already in existence. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do an asphalt road per mile. Again, how many people are on it and how many miles? It just doesn't make sense sometimes.
All right, well, my stomach's gonna start popping really loud here.
I just had two things, uh, I want to make notice. I'm going to be at the master builders. I don't remember if I said it or not. And Emily Randle's is having a thing. I'll be there from the beginning of it.
I'll be there for that also.
Now it's noticed.
Yeah, I think I've got it. I've got, uh, I gotta go to Thurston for the. T H B A, T T M B A, H A S O.
Pat, just so you know, none of us know what some of that stuff means either. I've been here for twelve years and I still just ride along with them.
So I'll be in Thurston County most of the day. I'll be back for the PAC meeting tonight.
Sounds good. And that starts at six, so, and we did announce that last Tuesday.
Anyway, I'll be in Olympia most of the day today.
You better cheer. I'm moving to cheer.
We're adjourned. All right, have a nice week.